...the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're, um, a couple of announcements we have. The next mayor in town council meeting will be September 10th, right here, um, same time. Don't forget the farmer's market is still going on every Sunday from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And then public comments, are there any public comments this evening, stuff that's not on the agenda?
We have to speak in that thing or is this ornamental?
No, I'll speak anyway.
My name is Julie Dela Maria. I am the executive director of the downtown connection, Sagsville downtown connection. I'm here to, tonight to talk to you about economic development. As you may know, one of the component of the connection is Economic Restructuring Committee. This committee focuses on maintaining a vibrant economic climate in our downtown. With a zero percent vacancy in downtown Sagsville, it involves designing alternative programs and finding venues for business development. If we want to ensure the success of our business community, it is crucial that we maintain sustainable growth, especially in this contest of aggressive residential development. With 144 townhouses coming at the top of the street additionally to other development projects around us, we need to expand our business area to stay attractive and satisfy the increased need of a larger community. The recent tragedy in Ellicott City has also triggered a drastic increase of the demand for Sagsville commercial space. It is not realistic to rely on the Wharf location to welcome small, unique family businesses that will not be able to afford a $30 square feet rate, while the average Carl County Main Street rate ranges from 12 to 18 square feet. We're on the lower side of that. We need to keep adding extraordinary businesses to what we have to, to survive the Amazon threat and the growth that's around us. For the first time, and that was last week, that's what triggered this, that my presence tonight, because even though this is an ongoing situation, it was a very hard realization for us last week to realize that for the first time in five years, there was no Sagsville businesses in the final list of the Carol Bies Challenge, which is a challenge that was won in the past by the French Trees, Trisport Junction, the Distillery, and Wine Candle, all businesses that have made our identity and made us famous. And it's not because those businesses didn't want to come to Sagsville, or because they didn't try, they did try. Those finalists, those very unique businesses, that's what put us on the map, that's what made us the coolest small town in America. Whether we decide to cultivate the National Main Street model and provide service businesses for extra spaces so they can free the first floor for retail, or whether we decide to focus on ameliorating our business area, we need the town to move forward and developing the Sandusky property. I know that the town has a concern about the parking issue, and that's one of the obstacles to this development, but the parking shortage that we are subjected to is not going to be impacted tremendously by plus or minus a dozen of parking spots. This issue can only be addressed by larger scale solution like South Branch paving, or alternative offside parking with a system of shuttle, which is something that the connection is already actively investigating right now. The gain in retail space, or mixed retail and office is what should be driving the decision to move forward with this development. If the town was to invest in developing it into a town facility, a town government facility, that would be an investment no less than $600,000 to $800,000 with no increase of property value, with no revenue. If the town on the other end would accept to investigate some proposals at a lower cost for 200,000 to 250,000 to pass this property, increase the number of parking spots more than what's being striped now, I think up to 84, and turn it into business space, we would gain way more than commercial space or business space. We would gain the opportunity of inviting unique businesses, of having the flooded art gallery from Ellicott City, or providing to our own businesses like Alamo Boutique, or Norwood Ice Cream, the opportunity for an expansion. So in my quality of director of the downtown Sagsville connection, I urge this group to please move forward and in a timely manner, consider the development of this property into commercial, retail, and office spaces. And I have brought with me, because it's very easy to say, oh, people told me, so I actually have brought with me the people who told me, so they can give their viewpoint and explain why they had selected Sagsville, and why we're missing big time on a huge opportunity for our success. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the comments on it. We're working on strategic planning, that's actually in our September meeting, we're gonna have some strategic planning initiatives internally with the council and start to get an idea of where to go with strategic planning, so we'll certainly consider your comments at that time, I think, through this process.
Somebody else wants to...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one more on that?
Sure.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen, the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you. My name's Dave Palmer, I'm the co-owner of Brewery Fire, we're a microbrewery startup that just won the Carol Bies Challenge. I came today to talk about the Sandusky Road property, the missed opportunity regarding the decision not to sell that property at this time. My partner and I emailed the city on multiple occasions, specifically making inquiries about that property as a place to locate our business. We both, my partner Jesse and I, love downtown Sagsville and have worked hard to establish good relationships with the businesses here on Main Street. We were disheartened by the ability to move our business here in a timely manner. As a result, we were forced to look elsewhere and have decided to locate in Tawney Town. We think that that building just across the street would have been perfect for a microbrewery, and those do wonders for bringing tourism to the town, and we hope that you would reconsider your offer to sell that building to a developer who might be interested in having a microbrewery there. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, sir. Hi, my name is Dazki, thank you for your time. I moved about four years ago from Columbia, Maryland to Sagsville, I was here for work, and I love, I fall in love with this town, but especially what I fall in love, the fact is, is a, is a family friendly town. So I have two small kids, my wish is to let it grow in a beautiful town, in peace and quiet, but also what I'm looking at, opportunity for a business, but also something to offer for the family there in town. So far, we have only a couple options, and they've been these couple options for a long time. So as, like you and most of you, sometimes you wanna go out and grab a meal or something, and you would like to explore different places. You don't feel like driving, after you're driving all day like me, all over Maryland, this in Virginia, driving another hour to go to another restaurant, or to go in another place, just not in town. I think with my experience in the food business, I grew up in this, I, I made a lot of good things in my history in Baltimore, Annapolis, within this business, and my expertise and knowledge would be something the town would can benefit right there, for example, to open a spot where it can be family friendly, affordable, and providing a great food for the community, including my own family, while we all eat every day. So, please consider the fact that you can bring some shine to this parking lot, especially an attraction, and can become also a famous destination for people in Sagsville and around the area, generate revenue, and keep the light shining in the town of Sagsville. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other comments on this topic?
Just real quick, and my, not comments, questions. My name's Bob Morris, I'm an area resident, and it's really, it's the same topic, a few people have asked me questions, and it seems there's a lot of supposition, a lot of speculation, and I just had questions myself and didn't know the answers, so I wanted to address you guys and see if you'd just help out. And I know, I'm sure you've discussed this, and I apologize for wasting your time asking questions, I'm sure you've already answered, but I don't know the answers to it, I know a lot of people in the room don't know the answers to as well. Why was the property initially bought? What was the, what was the strategy for initially buying it?
I think the initial thing from my perspective was, parking's been a constant struggle in this town, over and over and over, so these very same business people that you're talking about, the church, for instance, the business folks here, we're having, we're having a parking issue. So I think we kind of envisioned getting all these parking spaces, and then maybe selling the building off to, or redeveloping it into some, some IDX, some concept of getting some businesses. However, when we looked at the initial plans, we were not gonna net any spaces with the uses, and then we would lose over $200,000. So it became complicated to justify that to the public, okay, you buy it for seven, sell it for five, and end up with 15 parking spaces.
Right.
You know, great deal, Mr. Mayor.
Right.
Right? So you understand our challenge. So then we started looking at, you know, all right, is there other options to go through? And maybe we should take a step back, because this all happened kind of quick, some of these proposals, and we decided to review this whole entire project as part of a bigger plan, a bigger strategic plan, and that's what we're in the process of doing now, is looking at all of our resources, all of our buildings, all of our uses, our parking, the whole entire situation, parks, community centers, you know, and then figuring it out. And then Warfield, how do we tie this in, how do we complement, how do we make it all work? Because the town is growing, security needs are changing, this building is, has serious challenges for a lot of reasons, for a municipal office, so we started looking at that, saying, you know, is this an opportunity, is there... So there's a lot of opportunities that need to be vetted out with the council, and that's what we're, we're in the process, with staff, with council, with, and then a citizen input, this is certainly gonna weigh on everybody's minds for the decisions, I mean, I don't think... So nothing's done, we just really thought it was prudent to just take a step back, and rather than making a rash decision, plus some things came to light, there's a high-pressure sewer line that runs right through that parking lot that cannot be altered, you know, so that really changed the footprint from the original offers, you know, they had had some plans to do some things in there that now are not feasible.
Okay.
So it affected the value tremendously. Then to get the parking, the way, you know, even for a use in there, it's gonna be $150,000 for retaining walls, for connectivity, there's a lot of stuff. So it looks really simple at first, but then it gets real complicated, so, and then environmental issues inside the building, just, so everything needs to be...
And you know my background, I presume...
Yeah, yeah, Bob's awesome.
I presumed, I presumed all of that was the case, when I heard it, I, so I wanted to come in and, just as, with people were talking about it, I wanted to kind of bring it out in the open, that this was a strategic purchase, and I know you guys own the property next to it, and the property behind it.
Yeah, right.
And it was, and frankly, it makes, why strategic sense to buy the land right in the middle?
And that's what, it's right in the middle of our assets.
So you guys are still in the process of figuring out what to do with it, it sounds like there were, there were certain encumbrances as far as the development, I know there's a retaining wall issue on one side, it sounds like the underground utility stuff, but you guys are still trying to evaluate what to do with it.
Absolutely.
And you guys, have you guys ruled out selling it, or you guys...
No, I don't think anything's been ruled out at this point, nothing's been ruled out. I mean, we're not all the way down some road that we can't go back, we're really at the initial, we just think it's prudent enough, and I mean, I'm feeling way better about going through the proper process than just running right out and signing that contract and then saying, we should have never done that, you know what I mean? So I think, as the council, I think, at least if I can speak for myself, we felt like, let's take a step back, let's go through, let's talk to the chief, because we got issues with public safety in this building, with our police assets, with just our government office. In a growing town, this really, it was great back in the day, and it was really cool, but it really doesn't fit, you know, a municipal building. So that sort of came up, so let's vet it all out, let's get our staff's opinion on all different levels, let's get the council's to get stuff, and then let's get the community input as well, and then sit down with all the facts once we get them all out, and, and I think it'll be a way better solution, no matter what that is, I just think where everybody felt like they had a seat at the table, their voice was heard, all the options are vetted out, and then, who knows? I mean, so it might work out the way everybody wants.
Again, yeah, I know, I speak for many people in the room here, you have a ton of resources at your disposal, including a guy who developed shopping centers for a living.
Yeah, yeah, no, and...
So please feel free to tap us and let us know what we can do to help.
In full disclosure, Bob was on the Warfield Development Corporation board and was a huge asset, so thank you, Bob, for all your help, and I really appreciate it. So yes, we will utilize your services again.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any more comments on this one?
Is this a time to discuss this issue, or are you gonna discuss it later as part of the meeting?
This particular issue? Well, it just came out now, because if you wanna have any comment on it, let's say it now, because this was not on the agenda.
Yeah. I had no intention of speaking, but what I just heard, there seems to be a little bit of a revisionist history going on here. If you remember, during the campaign, this purchase of this property was at an issue, and I heard, I think from you Julie, that's, at least on Facebook and others, that this was bought ostensibly for parking, but then I heard, within weeks, that parking wasn't an issue, two studies were done, parking was an issue, I always contested that, because if you drive down here, you realize parking's an issue, so, that never sat right with me. But however, we're here right now talking about commercializing, getting some retail mixed use, and there was an offer on the table between private parties to purchase that property, and that was blocked by the town, and overpaid, if I might add. So this thing about buying it for parking doesn't sit well with me, that's not the way...
That's exactly why we bought it.
Yeah. I can 100% guarantee you, that's why we bought it, we wanted to preserve the park, because if another company come in and bought that building, let's say a repair shop or something like that, they could engage it.
Sure, and I understand, I agree that parking's an issue, I never contested that, others, but during the campaign...
We never had studies that, that, recent studies that showed, those studies that were old, that did not, when, not when the town was redeveloped the way it is right now, I mean, there were some old studies where, when three town managers ago, they determined that parking wasn't an issue, but there wasn't a lot going on in the town that year.
No, I've always questioned this.
French Twist didn't even exist then, so...
I'm a scientist, and one needs only their eyes to see that parking's an issue, and I agree.
Correct.
However, that, as it turns out, the due diligence wasn't done, it seems like the town rushed in to buy that property instead of letting it be between private transactions.
Not at all.
But Scott Beck was gonna purchase it.
Yeah.
And you all purchased it, and overpaid $200,000 more than the market value.
I don't think we ever paid for it.
I think you should look into that.
Keep in mind...
Pretty sure, because now we're paying principal and interest on something, if you recall.
No, we're not, we're not paying any interest on it.
I came and brought this attention, I asked, probably six months ago, we can look back in the record, but said, what's happening with that property, and it was like imminent, you said, we should know, like that week, and now poof, we're back at square one, meanwhile, the town, us, are paying principal and interest on that property.
No, we're not.
No?
It's paid off.
Okay, good. But, anyway, hindsight.
That's pretty...
There's nothing that that property really could be, the landscape, at least the, except the parking pad, now that we know that the...
But that's just not accurate, Dan, I mean, it's not accurate, that, that building can be a lot of things, that's what we're gonna do.
The parking lot was always gonna be a parking lot, we're here talking about it was bought for parking.
Right, and it can be a parking lot, we've got...
It must be a parking lot, there's a high velocity decker pump underneath that.
Correct, yes, we've envisioned that being town parking still, right now.
My point is that it could never be anything but, so it seems like the town bought that property for no good purpose and overpaid, and that was, that was a year ago, and it could have already been developed.
I disagree with you totally, if you find out what the cost of a finished parking space is, and do the analysis, we did not overpay for that, because we're gonna get 65 spaces out of there if we use it just for parking, plus, 65 plus, we got a great frickin' deal.
Could you have ever used it for anything but parking?
We didn't have any intention to, so you buy, it's like buying a house and wanting to make it a hotel, I mean, we bought it for a house.
Paying for parking spots that were always gonna be parking spots, that's what I'm questioning, does it make a lot of sense to me?
It wasn't, it couldn't have always been parking lots, like, I was trying to tell you before and you cut me off, was, say, a repair shop came in and bought that, they could wall it off, fence it off, we would have zero use of that, and that was our concern.
Sure, but the point of fact, that Scott Beck was gonna buy it and just make it retail, but that was blocked, and that was basically...
He could have came in when we, when we were buying it, he, there was a free market, we bought it on the free market.
Yeah, I realized, you outbid him with our taxpayer dollars, that's what upsets me.
We didn't have a bidding war, to my knowledge, there was no bidding war.
Okay.
I mean, it wasn't, I mean, you can ask the seller, actually, who was involved in that, I'm trying to think, but...
I wasn't involved in it.
Yeah, but anyway, you can ask the seller, Blue, Blue and O'Grady.
No, I understand.
I'm saying, I don't think there were other parties willing to pay, and it was listed at, it was listed at $1 million.
Two offers on the table, this was again, six months ago.
After we purchased it, two offers on the table to purchase it way below what we paid for it, and I don't see how that's a good decision, to sell, buy something at one price and then sell it for 250,000 less to it, you talk about bad deals for a town, those deals were bad.
I agree, I think that goes back to the decision of overpaying, yes.
Well, that's why we didn't do it.
They were willing to pay, what I think any reasonable person is willing to pay for that property, and that's where we are now.
Government, government can do different things than people do, that's how we acquire parking, that's how we get buildings.
Are you saying that government's role is to overpay?
No, I'm just saying, sometimes if you need to get the asset, and you control the zoning and some different things, they, there are zoning issues there that they cannot control, the government can, so we can change the value in a sense. I mean, you know, so, there's things like that, where they would plan to put some residential in there, without the zoning, they can't do it, so the value is commercial, industrial. So that's the kind of thing I'm saying, it does make a difference when the government has it, and then I'm just saying, it's inside our municipal piece, I mean, this was a critical piece for us.
If I could add, setting the value to what it might be worth for an operator like Beck or somebody from the outside to the value of the town, those are different values, they're insurance values, and it's worth more to the town to have the property than it might be for me, I looked at it too. I might be, it wasn't worth it for me, because I was looking at it from a scrape and come out of the ground, something new, and when, when I saw, when I heard what the bidding was going for, I said, this is somebody who can either use existing infrastructure on the property and take advantage of that, or this is somebody who has some, some strategic need for this property, which Beck would have had, or the town would have had, not me. So the value was driven up, and I was driven out, and that's just, that's just the equation of, typically when something that happens, it's somebody can use what's on the property, or they can take advantage of a strategic purchase, which the town took advantage of, so, hope that just helps to clear it up a little bit.
And I don't wanna detract the agenda too much further, I just, I would like to see something happen with that property, and that adds value.
Yeah, absolutely, so, man.
Right now, it's just sitting there.
There's not one person that's gonna, wants to see that just sit there like it is, I mean, on this council that I'm aware of. So we're moving, I think a well-thought-out plan will be much better than rushing into some, something quickly, and it may end up being...
Is that a timeline for that?
Yes, September, we're meaning September to start strategic planning, talking internally...
That doesn't mean a decision will be made.
Yeah, that doesn't mean any decisions will be made at that time, we will definitely have public hearing stuff on it, once we decide a forward plan, because it's gonna be big stuff, I mean, we're talking about finally getting to a strategic plan that connects all of our assets, that looks at all the different pieces, not just one, not just Main Street, I mean, we're talking about the whole town, you know, the parks, the connectivity, Warfield, public safety, I mean, we really are trying to take a full look at the entire town plan, and it's, it's actually really refreshing, because that's what we need to do, we need to stop piecemealing, we're finally taking a lot of the thoughts, we met before and got a lot of our thoughts down on paper, and we've taken those, I think Jared has worked on it, started with a rethink, putting together some, some really good concepts, and then we're gonna, we're gonna talk at our, at our September meeting early, and then sort of come up with some framework on how to proceed with it, and, so it's gonna be good, I mean, I'm excited about it, and that's gonna be all part of that.
So how long does it take to do strategic planning?
It's not gonna take that long, I think we got a clear vision, starting to formulate, and it's gonna be, it's gonna start moving now, this isn't gonna be years or whatever.
I think, if I can, I don't...
Sure.
But I think the important thing here is, when you talk about strategic planning, you have to look at the whole picture and you have to look long-term, so, and I'll take some of the responsibility, coming in and seeing what the plan was for that building, it is my recommendation that we slow down and we make this make sense, all of our assets have to work together, we can't look at it from a short-term perspective, we have to look at what we wanna be when we grow up, 20, 30 years down the road, not just what will make sense for the next five. So, the strategic planning conversation will start in September, it may not be finished by October, these conversations have to take place, questions have to be asked and answered, and all of this has to make sense for the council, who is charged with making sure that they're making the best decisions for the town, short and long term.
Does make sense, but you have to keep in mind that anyone ready to pay county assessment, July 1st, 2017, 4600,000 or more for that property, is not going to do it for a short time, five years, they also do look at the long, grand picture, they also do look at the future, and the people that we're talking to, maybe it's time to start recognizing their talents in the fact that they have been building the puzzle of Main Street for now two decades, they have been very successful at it, maybe also we should take those things in account, I don't know, you can value that or quantify it on paper, but I wish that we could come to recognize that, appreciate it a little more.
I think the whole council appreciates Main Street tremendously, that's all I hear about, they hear about, they, they value the development of Main Street, but as the town, the town staff and the town council, we can't just look at just Main Street, this is an entire town, so we have to look at the whole picture, and that's really what the goal is here, is to get council to see the whole picture of the town and to make an informed, educated decision on what's best for the town.
And I think that may create other opportunities, I really do, I mean, I think there's gonna be other opportunities created, maybe not the same ones, but different ones, there'll be opportunities, I'm excited.
As long as you don't sit and...
No, we're not sitting, I can assure you, we're not sitting. No, no, we're not sitting, we're getting moving. The time for sitting has ended. All right, we're gonna get moving on, so thanks for bringing that up, and I appreciate all the comments on it. All right, treasurer's report, Evelyn, you're up.
Good evening, everyone, Evelyn Sweet, treasurer for the town of Sagsville. We have our year-end treasurer report, I would like to say that the town finished the year out with expenses over revenues of around $63,000, this is partially due to the payoff of Sandusky, and also, we have recognized the sale of Warfield assets, which adds back to that. So anyway, every department finished under budget for the year, and we were, we did collect some revenues that were unanticipated, some minor dividend checks from workers' comp and that kind of thing. Do you guys have any questions?
Great job from the departments, the people that came in under budget, thank you, that's awesome. Any questions?
The mayor, town council, we were even under budget, did you know that?
We don't have much of a budget. So anyway, any questions for Evelyn?
How's the audit coming along? I, my annual, my monthly question.
They came and they went, and everything went fine, I'm not aware of any major issues that occurred. They, we are their first client, so it takes them, they collect our information, and then they go on to other government entities, and it takes them a while, it takes a while to get feedback from them, so I'm expecting some feedback in September and not before then, but everything went fine.
Is it the same accounting firm that we always used, or did we switch?
Yes, we have not switched, I believe that we were going to put it out for bid this year, this was their third year of a three-year contract, so we will be putting it out to bid this year, and we'll see what happens.
Evelyn also has information unrelated to the treasurer's report, but it's been an ongoing question from council member, council president Betts, regarding the credit card machine, so Evelyn, if you...
I wasn't gonna bring it up again.
Well, we have, we...
I was giving her more time.
We have an update, and we have a potential solution. So, Evelyn, if you can...
We are currently going through Elevon, they are not providing us with very good service, they're very hard to get ahold of, and you kind of get the runaround, call this department, call that department. At any rate, their fees are ranging from 1.83% to 3.48%. So that, they are not through our bank, I contacted our bank, and they sent me to their affiliate US bank, who did give me some prices, they said they could save us around $600 a year, and I do find them to be reasonable, but I also contacted PayGov, PayGov has two programs, one where the town would absorb the credit card fees, and one where the credit card holder would absorb the fees. The fees are 3% even, no matter which way you go, their equipment is free, their training is free, and the snag is that if telephone assistance is needed, they charge 4.95%. I, I recommend that we go with PayGov, they have a month-to-month contract, and we go with them and see if it works out for us.
And we absorb the cost.
Just like what we're doing now.
Right, just like what we're doing now, that's what we've talked about, and we think that's the best way. We're also going to start exploring the potential for tickets issued by the police department to be paid online, in which case, that cost would be absorbed by the credit card holder, since it's online, and that's more of best practice for, as a convenience fee, but any...
But anything taken at the post office or, you know, on-site, we would absorb that three percent.
PayGov can do the online accessing or is that...
We're in the early stages of exploring that.
Have you checked to see what our last so many months, let's say six months, at our current percentage that we're paying versus the flat three percent? And see what the difference is?
Yes. By the time that the existing people add in their fees of just a copy of our statement and whatever else, we're paying, some months we're paying, it's always over four percent. But there have been a couple of months where it's gone over five and six percent. So our total dollar transactions were around seventy-eight thousand dollars for the year. And three percent of that would come out to around twenty-three hundred dollars. So that would save us around a thousand dollars a year. We, a little bit more than a thousand a year. We paid almost thirty-five hundred in FY eighteen for credit card fees. The whole PayGov, you know, the, the guy from, through our bank, he, you know, likes to put the fear in you so that you'll buy his service instead. We won't have any local representatives, yada, yada, yada. Well, PayGov did supply a long list of, of governments that they work with and I got some good, really excellent references. So I feel that we should think about changing to PayGov and see how many times we're gonna need telephone assistance at the four point nine five percent. I, I just, I don't have any way of knowing that. But I think it would behoove us to move away from the company that we are currently using.
Is that something that just the administration needs to just deal with? Or is that something that comes in front of the council?
No, we don't need your approval on that. But we did wanna keep you in the loop and make sure that we close that request for you.
Yes, thank you for doing that.
Yep, appreciate you looking into that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the June two thousand eighteen treasurer's report.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Thanks a lot, Evelyn. We'll talk about that.
Thank you. Alright, chief, you're up. Public safety report.
Sure. Thank you. Evening, everyone. Keith Balding, Seidsville Police Department. We got a kind of a lengthy public safety report. I'll do my very best to condense it as much as I can. We'll hit the highlights and see if you have any questions. It's covering the period of July second through August fifth, so a little over a full month. During that time, we handled a total of seven hundred and thirty-four events. Some of the highlights were thirty-one assist other agencies, seven community policing incidents, twenty-eight incident reports, which were reflected on pages two and, two and three of your packet, three hundred and sixty-three patrol checks, eighty-eight traffic enforcement initiatives, again, for a total of seven hundred and thirty-four events. Any questions about...
My typical question about, I noticed there was a couple of trespassing incidents over at Warfield and then a actual break-in. Were the trespassing incidents related to the break-in?
No, no, but it shows our officers are doing a great job. Both of those incidents you're referring to, our officers doing patrol checks, observed people trespassing on the property, stopped them, identified them, questioned them. In both cases, they were found to be people who just didn't realize or didn't notice that there was no trespassing signs posted everywhere. In fact, in one case, I think the officer said, you don't see that sign right there? And you're, oh geez.
That's not for me.
But in any event, they, in, in the officer's discretion, they were deemed to be not up to no good. Basically, just in the wrong place at the wrong time. You know, the hour of the day was taken into consideration and so forth. So they were given warnings and documented it and told if they were caught back there again, it would be not a worry. So, but, you know, the fact that you asked about that, yes, there was also several incidents at Warfield where damage was caused to multiple buildings. In fact, since this report, there's been two other incidents. So we've been kept very busy over there. I've asked the officers to increase their patrol checks. I think I went back and out of curiosity, looked at how many patrol checks were strictly at Warfield during this one-month period. And it was over eighty. They were just at that building. But we can't be there all times of day and night at twenty-four, seven. But we're doing the very best we can to be there, but unfortunately, things are still happening. We did recently have a meeting with the HPS management, with Elm Street, Steve McLeve, to discuss security concerns over there. And it was a very productive meeting. They were very open to our recommendations. And so I think you'll see some security enhancements over there in the very near future that will, I think, deter people from trespassing and committing these violations, as well as being, be an aid to us if people do commit these crimes. There might be some video evidence that may be helpful to us in the future to track these people down and hold them accountable. Cause quite frankly, it's, it's an annoyance. It's mostly juveniles. You can read, if you saw some of the things that were spray painted and some of the, the language and the, the depictions of certain parts of anatomy, it would lead me to believe that it was, was, was kids and just up to no good. So, you know, we're gonna do our very best to catch them and hopefully put an end to it. But it, it does do a lot of damage to the buildings and the walkways. It has to be removed and it takes time and effort and money to have that done. We're on it, but they've gotten us a few times here lately and we're gonna do our very best to stop it.
Do they have a timeline, like maybe you start working on the security, the actual implementation?
They seem very eager to start right away. And then especially in light of, again, the two, the two, two incidents here and then two more since then. So there's been four incidents very recently where quite a bit of damage was done. Mostly graffiti, spray paint, and some basement level windows were broken and entered. So I think they're, they're as eager as we are to put some enhancements in place to prevent people from being able to do that. I think you'll see it very, very soon.
Well, thanks for all your efforts over there, increasing and working with them. I appreciate it.
Sure.
And chief, my favorite topic.
Yes.
Second Avenue.
Transitions.
There's eleven incidents on here.
Between Warfield and transitions, they're keeping us busy, yes. And it's funny you mention that. We did recently look, look into our requirements under state law regarding responding there because we, we started to get calls where there was verbal abuse being committed. And, you know, from our, from our perspective, verbal abuse is not a crime. You know, we're only required to respond there and take reports of crime. But we actually pulled up the law and spoke with some people that are very knowledgeable about the requirements there. And verbal abuse does fall within their reporting requirements. But what we've decided to do, instead of having to write a whole incident report, when it just involves verbal abuse, we're giving them a call for service number and just documenting it on a very, a very brief entry in our records management system instead of writing a whole report. So it makes it easier for our officer not to have to write a full report and it gives them the documentation that's necessary.
Is it a lack of supervision there? Like why are these patient-on-patient assaults happening all the time?
Well, unfortunately, most of the time, they're, they're not legitimate. A lot of times when you're dealing with people with mental issues, they, they, they're not, not always accurate about what happens. So a lot of times, it's he said, she said type of situations. But they're still required to report it to us and we're, we're still required to write a report. So none of them ever end up in court and are prosecuted. But it's just one of those things, it's a state requirement that they report it to us. So we have no, no choice but to take a report.
Well, thank you for looking into those details, cause that's what I was gonna ask too. Is there anything we can do to minimize our time there?
We'd be a big work.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, I guess, on the one hand, it keeps the officers sharp in their report-writing abilities. Again, if it wasn't for transitions, they wouldn't be, in Warfield, we wouldn't be writing a whole lot of reports.
Captain, sir.
Well, I was just gonna help them out there because for the last twenty-two years, I've worked in retirement villages.
Oh, so you know.
You know, great woods, you know, right up the river. And it is a requirement of the state to report it. And that's where the nursing home itself is, you know, they're just trying to do their due diligence. And, you know, they'll do an audit every year and if they're not documenting it, they'll get fined.
Absolutely. We understand that.
I understand that. I'm just looking at how can we as a town minimize our officers' time there, if it is possible?
It's challenging for you.
It is very challenging.
Do they have any healthcare staff there at all or no?
I don't believe they have actually security. There's a lot of staff there that, you know, that are responsible for their wellbeing or safety, but I don't think they're actually considered security.
Any other questions for the chief?
Didn't want to add, if there are no further questions about National Night Out. I know you guys are dying to know.
Yes, right. Is it tomorrow?
Unfortunately, as you know, it was canceled last week due to the condition of the grounds. It was postponed until tomorrow. As you know, we just had quite a rain here within the last couple hours. I'm waiting for a word from Ellen, whether it will still be held. There's an option, they may move it inside in the fire hall. So one way or other, it may, may still take place. It's just whether it's outside or in. But as soon as I know, we'll certainly get it out on Newsflash and Facebook and every other way because, you know, we certainly want people to still come. But it's unfortunate that everyone else had theirs except for us.
Right.
And we're playing catch-up, so. Hope people still wanna show up.
But anyway, well, thanks for all your work on that, yeah. And if people, please attend if you can, yeah.
We'll get word out tomorrow as many ways as we can.
If it's happened.
For one way or the other, yep.
And thanks to Ellen Dix.
Yeah, I know, she's very, all the work that she put into this and then have it, have it kind of...
Yeah.
Just because of the condition of the grounds.
And this was the twentieth year?
No, this was the tenth.
Tenth? Tenth year.
Seidsville now is very...
It's been an unusual rain year.
Thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, chief. And the council committee reports were submitted. Our consent agenda this evening is the items of two zero one eight dash five five, Town Council minutes from July ninth, two zero one eight dash five six, action on the surplus of the police vehicle, two zero one eight dash five seven, action of the appointment of members to the Spark Board. Does anybody have any questions about the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent agenda.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Alright, open session items. Two zero one eight dash five eight is the action on resolution number two zero one eight dash one oh, and that is the naming of the pedestrian tunnel located under Route thirty-two to the Jonathan S. Herman Tunnel. So as you're aware of, Ross Dangell had brought up, brought the suggestion to the council. We thought it was appropriate to name it since Jonathan Herman, former mayor, was instrumental in redeveloping the intersection, took it from the state and through cost savings, was able to incorporate the tunnel at the great disdain of the Maryland State Highway Administration. So, you know, we're, we're always proud. When I first got elected mayor, whenever, whenever I'd be at the highway, they'd maybe talk about that, that tunnel, you know, like. So it was really visionary. And I think the council thought Ross's suggestion was, was appropriate. And it's gonna really help us connect, as part of what we were talking before, connecting Warfield to Springfield, to the Gate House, to Main Street. We're really excited about the whole thing, so we're, we're thinking it's great. He was unable to attend this evening. We do have a certificate for him. We'll, we'll invite him to come to a future council meeting. We'll present it to him quietly, which he may prefer, cause he's a very humble man. So with that, does somebody wanna, I guess, do we need a motion for that or?
There's a resolution, yes. There's a resolution, so yes.
Two eighteen dash ten.
Make, approve the resolution eighteen, twenty eighteen dash fifty-eight. Resolution number twenty eighteen dash ten, renaming the pedestrian tunnel located under Maryland Route thirty-two, the Jonathan S. Herman Tunnel.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Approved! So we're gonna get a, I think the plan is to get a plaque down there on the, on, again, need to try and see how, if you would like to be...
Are there graffiti artists that can public anything?
No. No, thank you. Alright, next item is two zero one eight dash five nine. This is discussion of the USDA Rural Business Development Grant.
Mayor, Jared Schumacher, our circuit writer, is here to present this item. We wanted to keep you updated on what's going on here. We just received this grant.
Hello, everyone. I am Jared Schumacher, circuit writer, here in town, if you don't know. I just wanted to update the mayor and council on a grant the town just received from the United States Department of Agriculture. This is a Rural Business Development Grant. We received thirty thousand dollars from them to conduct an engineering study for what we're calling connectivity. Basically, what we wanna do is get the neighborhoods of the north side of town connected to the downtown area through an engineering study. And we want this engineering study to be pretty, pretty extensive. We'd like to be able to use it not only for placement of, of a, of a walking path, but to be able to get specifications needed of any type of easements or stormwater management, things like that, so we can actually go out to bid for the project when it's time, when, when that project comes to. So we want it to be pretty extensive. The town has a ten percent match for it, acquired a ten percent match for it.
Ten, ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty-five percent.
Twenty-five percent, excuse me. I was just working on community parks, playgrounds, that's ten percent. Yes, twenty-five percent match.
Is any in-kind services allowed to go into that?
As, as our match? I don't believe USDA will allow in-kind services. I'll double-check on that for you.
Okay, yeah, I couldn't decipher any of that.
Yeah, it, a lot do. For instance, one of the current grants we, we just received, we are using some, some in-kind for that. But this one's gonna be, I think, mostly cash, cash match, yeah. Are there any questions in particular about the grant or the program or the project itself?
So if I read this correctly, you're gonna be going out to bid on this next month, is it?
We wanna go out to bid as quickly as possible.
Right. So what's the, I'm sorry, I guess it's in here, the timeline, when this will be wrapped up, I guess, projected closeout of, of June next year?
Yeah, it's a preliminary timeline. I mean, it's just something we came up with that we would like to see happen. Yeah, we, we wanna be pretty aggressive about this because we know it's been a plan of the town for quite a while. We feel like we can finally now, now accomplish something with it. I knew connectivity's been a problem for a while and I think this study is really a great way to, to go about fixing that problem.
Okay, I mean, the reason why I was bringing that up is just looking at the, the timing on here, I guess, when we do move forward with this, to be able to have time to incorporate any recommendations into next year's budget if we can...
Yes.
Move forward with that for construction costs or anything like that.
USDA's not requiring any, anything special for this, right? It's just, if we get the grant, do they require anything special from the town or?
Just the ten thousand dollars.
You said ten thousand dollars, there's nothing else?
Uh, no, I, I think I know where you're going with that. We're not running to an SHA problem, I'm assuming you mean. Uh, no, it's not gonna be like that bad. We can use the town's bidding methods, for instance, and things like that. So, yeah, it should be pretty standard.
Okay, great.
And, yes.
Does that include, this is a north area of the town, or that includes schools?
The middle school?
Yes.
No. No, but, but we're hoping to work on that pretty soon too, so.
And we'll be addressing that in an agenda item. Actually, that's next.
Yeah.
Jared, what's the radius that you're giving the surveys?
For, for the actual study? We don't have one. Basically, all, all we wanna do is where there is no connectivity from, from these, all, the whole, all the neighborhoods of the north side of town. Just to get them to the downtown area. Just to get them to the downtown area somehow. That's the kind of the point of the study. We do have some ideas and some thoughts on how we might be able to do that, but without a study, we're just not sure, you know what I mean? So that's kind of the point of it. As many, as many houses as we can get connected to downtown is what's gonna happen.
Okay, thank you.
We talked about that internally, and we came to the conclusion we should look at, we just wanna, we don't wanna bias them. We want them to come and do the review and tell us what they think, and maybe it'll match up with what we talked about, maybe not, but the experts will tell us, I guess, what's the best route.
Awesome. So this is great progress, and this is one of the things that we talked about early on, too, is having issues with connectivity and sidewalks and getting a complete analysis of our sidewalks. I wanted to thank you for all your work you've been doing. You've been a real asset, and especially for doing this project, so.
Absolutely, it's a great project, I think.
So I see in the staff report that, I guess, it's suggested that we take the $10,000 out of the CIP funding for sidewalks.
Yes.
Do we need to do any special motions for that?
Not right now.
Okay.
But I would probably come back to it.
Are you guys able to move forward with the bids and everything without us doing that?
We can. It will come to you for approval prior to spending any of that money.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Alright, thank you so much, yep.
That was eye-popping, reading this on the staff report, it's like, alright.
Thank you so much.
We still have the contact information from that woman who was, like, collecting the change.
Yes, on the money, right. She might be excited to help us out. Yeah, she'll be excited. Once she finds out. Alright, and then 2018-60 is the discussion in action on a request for proposal for sidewalk and ramp construction of the state routes, safe routes to school grant.
So this project, and Mark couldn't be here this evening, he apologizes, but he did work on the staff report, and he's been doing really a great job managing this process over the past couple of years now. And we were at a standstill for a while, but we're back rocking and rolling and moving. We did go back to the grantors for a budget amendment for legal services, and when they did their initial review, they found that we needed to create ramps in areas that were not in the original grant, and so we went back and asked for funding for that because they did not provide that in the original grant. So we did get a budget amendment of about $18,000 to cover additional legal costs because we are gonna have some easement issues, and to cover the additional ADA ramps. There are three additional ADA ramps that we did not anticipate in the beginning. So we have put out an RFP. We received seven bids, and we are recommending tonight that you all approve that we accept the bid from SNG Engineering in the amount of $13,530.
I think that's an awesome bid.
That is a fantastic bid, especially when you compare that to the highest one that came in at $38,000. So there were some a little closer, and we were upfront about what our budget was, and, you know, so people were happy to stay within that, so that was great.
And I like that you followed up on the references and supplied those in the report here.
Yeah, this is another one that definitely requires appreciation of staff work on this. Mark, this is a very complicated federal program that we weren't sure was gonna pan out, so we may.
We were about ready to give up on it, and I do wanna say kudos to Jared on this as well. He's been, I mean, very integral, played an integral role in getting the ball rolling on this again and staying on top of the granting organization, so he's been a huge help in this area, so. He and Mark together have just been dynamite.
Yeah, thank you again, and definitely thanks, Mark, for, because I know this has been quite an interesting one.
Anyway, that's just for the public that's here. Can you just sum up what that area consists of that we're re-approaching?
Absolutely, yes, and Julie, this goes to your question. So this will be about 500 linear feet from the middle school connecting that piece of sidewalk that is not there to the downtown. And so it's really a grant for what it says, to provide a safe route to and from schools. And so the middle school is our only public school, and it'll really fill in the gap there. Now, there are residential properties along that route. Again, we need some easements, so we may run up to, against some issues. We're not real sure on what the timeline is gonna be at this point. We're hoping to get started this year, if possible. The weather has been crazy. School will start back. If, at this point, if it does get done this year, it'll get started while school is in. We already have a plan in place to talk to the schools, to work with the contractor on times that they determine, you know, decide to do it, maybe during the school hours and finish by the time school lets out, so they'll be working on a condensed timeframe, but we're kind of anticipating some of those issues now internally and preparing ourselves.
Will it also include across the street and the vacant property, I was gonna say?
So it will, the ramps will be, there'll be two ramps on both sides of Jeroby, at the, at Springfield in the corner of Central, I'm just looking at my nose to remember, and Springfield across from the old service station. So those are where the connectivity on those ends of the street will be, and then the rest of it will just be down Springfield.
Thank you.
Well, it says action. So what are you looking for from us?
I'm looking for approval of the RFP to accept the bid from SNG Engineering in the amount of $13,530.
I make the motion of what Rita just said?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. Agreed. Okay, and then we did have one, and before we get into the comments, we did have a personnel, a last-minute personnel item that we are gonna discuss in closed session this evening, so there may be a vote, if anybody's interested in that, it's a personnel issue. So we will, I need the readings for that. Are you gonna read that? Because we do need the, since, is that in here?
At some point.
Yes, we're gonna need that.
Do you wanna go to council and manage your comments first?
Sure. That's why I was just throwing that out there. Anytime. We're gonna need the wording for that just to be correct. So any council comments about anything?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to pass along my thanks to Carroll County Government, the water company, and their contractors. Over the weekend of July 28th, I had some neighbors over, and they left the house, it looked like, or it sounded like it was pouring down rain, and it turned out to be a broken water main right in front of my house. It was about 10 o'clock, called up to the county, about 10:30, their contractor was on site, and they stayed till about 10 o'clock the next morning. It was two out of three valves that had failed, and it was an eight-inch water main with about, I think the guy said, 80 pounds per square inch of pressure, very, a lot of water going out, so just wanna pass on my thanks, and also thanks to the town and working with the county to get the road repaved. Fortunately, our contractors were in town, and so I assume the county worked with them to, to get it. So literally, Saturday night, 10 o'clock, water main break. By Wednesday, noon time, the road was repaved. So it's very good job. My only comment on that for my neighbors and people that drive by my street, I know it looks weird when two houses up from me is old pavement, two houses down from me is old pavement, right in front of the councilman's house is brand new. That wasn't me, that was the county. I know the optics on that film was real accurate, but, but they did a great job, so kudos to everybody involved.
I wanted to, yeah, if you're gonna speak on that, because Mark Anhajer worked with them as well, and that was a really.
Unprecedented.
Thing, having them to come in and fix it right, rather than band-aiding, and having the paving contractor in town was unprecedented to get them to work that out, so that was great. Thanks for bringing that up. Any other council comments?
I have a manager comment. Yes, this is exactly what I was talking about. I just wanted to mention that we are in the midst of an exciting competition, contest, game, whatever, called Sykesville Bingo. That is hashtag Sykesville Bingo. This has been going on since August, July 31st, and it ends on August 31st. Cards have to be turned in by September 5th. There are a ton of different things that you can do throughout the town, throughout our main street. Hopefully, you can learn something new about Sykesville. If you get bingo in any direction, just like regular bingo, turn it in to the townhouse by September 5th, and at the September 13 council meeting, oh, September 10 council meeting, the mayor will announce our winner, and we'll also contact you, and there'll be a fun Sykesvilly prize for you. So please play.
And awesome job, Carrie. I've seen all the pictures of all the opportunities, so that's been great, been great advertising.
Thank you.
Very, the council are in those, I'll tell you. Yeah, so play bingo.
And one of the, I will say, one of them is to get, take a selfie with the mayor, right?
Yes, by the way.
And he is here.
Nobody's called for that. What? Nobody's called for that.
Isn't that the free space?
Yeah, that's a free space. Put that in the center next time. Alright, so, well, thanks for all the comments. Okay, so as we were talking for our meeting, the meeting is proposed to be closed pursuant to the general provision of the Annotated Code of Maryland, Section 3-305B1, to discuss the appointment, employment, assignment, promotion, discipline, demotion, compensation removal, resignation, or performance evaluation of appointees, employees, or officials over whom it has jurisdiction, or any other personnel matter that affects one or more specific individuals. So that's what we'll be talking about in the closed session. So we're gonna make a motion for a five-minute recess.
Sir?
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
It's having more of a contemporary recess.
Yeah.